Good evening. My name is Sean Powell and I'm the Acting Chairman of the Maryland Transportation Authority Board. Seeing we have a quorum, I hereby call the meeting of the MDTA Board to order at 6:00 PM. I will now turn the meeting over to Mr. Andrew Bing to moderate.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening. I am Andrew Bing, and I'll be the hearing officer for tonight's hearing for the Maryland Transportation Authority, abbreviated as MDTA. The MDTA is conducting this call-in public hearing testimony session on the I-95 Express Toll Lanes or ETL Northbound Extension Project, Section 200, and I-695 ramps tolling plan. As the hearing officer responsible for running tonight's public hearing, and on behalf of the MDTA, I welcome you. The purpose of this public hearing is for interested parties to provide official testimony and comments for the public record on the proposed toll rate range for the I-95 ETL Northbound Extension Project, Section 200, and I-695 ramps. We hope you've had the chance to review the public hearing materials related to this tolling proposal on the project webpage Tonight's public hearing is being livestreamed via the internet and phone and audio recorded. The official transcript of the public hearing testimony will become part of the project record and will be available for public review on the I-95 Express Toll Lanes ETL Northbound Extension Project, Section 200, and I-695 ramps tolling plan webpage. MDTA Board members and the hearing moderator will be listening to the testimony and will not respond to comments or questions. I would now like to introduce the Executive Director of the MDTA, Will Pines. Executive Director Pines will introduce the MDTA Board.
Thank you, Andrew. My name is Will Pines and I'm Executive Director for the MDTA. I want to thank everyone for joining and for their participation in the hearing. I will now introduce the MDTA Board members who are in attendance for today's hearing. We have Acting Chairman Sean Powell, Member William H. Cox Jr., Member W. Lee Gaines Jr., Member John F. Von Paris, Member Dante Carroll, Member Mario J. Gangemi, Member Cynthia D. Penny Arndinger. Okay, thank you, Andrew. Please continue with the remaining instructions for our hearing.
Thank you, Will. On behalf of the MDTA Title VI Officer, I will explain the significance of Title VI and how it relates to the tolling plan. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 was put into effect to prohibit discrimination on the basis of race, color, or national origin. To support the Act, the United States Government designated additional statutes, laws, regulations, and executive orders to provide guidance for the effective execution of the objectives of Title VI. MDTA is responsible for upholding the principles of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and related guidance. MDTA's policies and programs should not discriminate against people on the grounds of race, color, national origin, sex, age, English proficiency, income level, or disability. MDTA policies and programs should avoid disproportionately high or adverse impacts on minority populations and low-income populations. MDTA seeks to provide citizens, stakeholder groups, and other interested parties with reasonable opportunities to be involved in the toll rate range setting process. Title VI information can be found on the project webpage If you have questions or need assistance, call 410-537-5660. We invite you to take our voluntary demographic survey online to help us ensure that we are reaching the communities that are affected by the toll rate range setting process. For more information regarding Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and other non-discrimination laws, please review the Civil Rights under Title VI brochure. Any member of the public has the right to file a discrimination complaint against the MDTA if they feel the MDTA does not comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the related statutes. There are multiple ways to comment on the proposed toll rate ranges. Comments are being accepted through April 13, 2023. There is a comment form available through the project website, or you can send to the MDTA via US mail. Public and private testimony can also be provided at one of the three public hearings. All comments received, whether at the hearing through verbal testimony or through other methods such as comment form, email, or US mail, will be given equal consideration. You can provide call-in testimony for tonight's virtual public hearing testimony session or provide in-person testimony at the public hearing scheduled for Monday, March 6, at Joppetown High School, starting at 5:30 PM. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to allow interested parties to provide public comments on the proposed toll rate ranges for the I-95 Express Toll Lanes ETL Northbound Extension Project, Section 200, and I-695 ramps. Tonight's public hearing is being broadcast via the internet livestream and by phone. The MDTA Board members will be listening to all public testimony. My role as the hearing officer is to run a professional and orderly public hearing. I understand how important the issues are related to the tolling proposal, and I take my role as hearing officer seriously. I am committed to providing members of the public an opportunity to provide comments in a fair, professional, and orderly manner. Offensive or profane language will not be allowed. After one warning, if offensive or profane language continues, the call will be ended or the speaker will be disconnected. I also want to let everyone know that we will not be answering questions or responding to any comments made during the hearing. If you are watching the livestream and are interested in providing live testimony, please call 512-580-8850. Once you call 512-580-8850 and enter code 4128, please listen to the entire welcome message. Once the welcome message ends, you will hear, "For more options, press *." At that point, press the * button, and when prompted, press 3 to enter the speaker queue. We are interested in hearing comments from everyone. Please remember that the hearing is being recorded. Speak directly and clearly into your phone and provide your full name, address, and any organization you may represent. To ensure time for all to be heard, there will be a three-minute time limit for public testimony and a five-minute time limit for elected officials. The time will start after you introduce yourself. When providing testimony, a single tone will sound when there are 30 seconds remaining. A double tone will sound when you have 10 seconds remaining, and at this point, you should wrap up your testimony. As the hearing officer, if you are unable to conclude your comments at the end of your time period, I will ask you to wrap up your testimony, and then I will end the call and move on to the next person in the queue. At this time, I'm going to call on the first person in the speaker queue. At this time, however, we do not have anyone that has signed up and entered the... Let me reframe that. We do have a bunch of people who have signed up, but we do not have anyone that's entered the speaker queue in order for them to provide public testimony. So I want to just give a couple reminders here. If you are listening or if you're having any issues in terms of getting into the speaker queue, again, the number to call is 512-580-8850. You will enter the code 4128. Very importantly, you must listen to the entire welcome message, and then you will press the * key and then the number 3 to enter the speaker queue. So at this point, because we do not have any speakers that have entered the speaker queue, we are going to go into recess. It is 6:10 PM. I do want to remind everyone that when we do have people enter the speaker queue, we will come back from recess, and then we will listen to that testimony. So for right now, we are in recess. I will come back on and update people, or we'll come back on if we have someone enter the speaker queue. Again, right now, it is 6:10, and we are in recess.
to the speaker queue. So the phone number is 512-580-8850. I'll say it one more time. And then you enter the code, the access code of 4128 pound. After you listen to the entire welcome message, you'll then press the star key and then press the number three to enter the speaker queue. So we are going to remain in recess. Again, the public comment period will remain open through April 13th, 2023. This hearing will remain open until eight o'clock tonight. So I will come back periodically, let people know what's going on, provide an update. And we, we do know that several people had registered to provide public testimony. So we do expect that at some point those people will come into the speaker queue and we will get their testimony. But at this point, it is 6:21 PM and we will remain in recess. And I will come back at 6:40 unless we have someone enter the speaker queue. But I'll provide my next update at 6:40. We are in recess. Thank you. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven, obviously, we will come back and take their testimony. But for right now, it is 6:38 PM and we are in recess. Okay. Apparently, a few minutes ago, when I was taking us to recess, there was an issue with my microphone. Hopefully, that has been resolved. I did want to come back on again to thank our previous caller. And I explained to her that we would try to send her an email to help her out with her notice of toll due issue. But after that, we were going into recess. I'm going to come back on at seven o'clock PM to provide an update. If we get any people entering the speaker queue before seven,[1505.97] Okay, it is 7:02. We are coming back from recess for a quick update. We still do not have any callers that have entered the speaker queue. This hearing will remain open until 8 o'clock PM, so there still is plenty of time for those who have registered or others to enter the speaker queue and provide testimony. Again, I've provided this information, but I'm going to do it again just in case there's anyone who has decided that they would like to provide public testimony. If you'd like to, you just call the phone number 512-580-8850, and you press the enter, you enter the code 4128. After listening to the welcome message, you will press the star key and then the number 3, and you will enter the speaker queue. And I do want to remind people that our next in-person public hearing will be this Monday, March 6th at 5:30 at Joppetown High School. And I do want to remind everyone that the public comment period will remain open through April 13th, 2023. Right now it is 7:03, and we will remain in recess. I will come back on at 7:30 to provide another update, unless we have a speaker enter the speaker queue, and then we will come on to take that person's testimony. We are in recess.
Okay, we're coming back from recess.
This hearing will remain open until 8 o'clock. If anyone does enter the speaker queue before 8 o'clock, we will take their testimony. If not, I will come back on at 8 o'clock. I will conclude the hearing and then we will have the board meeting adjourned. So again, the comment period does remain open through April 13th, 2023. And right now it is 7:30 and we remain in recess.
You